Okay, it's four o'clock Wednesday, July 20th, 2022. What's gonna start the town Sangaville Selectmen's meeting? With the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two, approval of the minute Select Ward Meeting seven six twenty twenty-two.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? We're all three in favor. Item three, review of Treasurers' warrants payroll fifty-nine and sixty, accounts payable fifty-eight and sixty-one.
Make the motion to approve AMB is read.
Second.
All in favor? We're all three in favor. Open session? Did you guys wanna talk about anything other than fire department on item six, or no?
Us, just fire department.
Okay. Old town business, town home.
So... We are allowed to leave the property in this building, so we can come and back and forth, just very limited, but we're able to leave.
So, people at home understand, we had some emails back and forth. We were questioning, we lose our liability insurance in September, the end of September. The question was, did we have to literally pull everything that we might think we ever would need out before then? Or could we go back and forth, no town business, no meetings, no public, and the insurance company has confirmed that we can do that? That's very helpful.
Very helpful, they don't have to move.
An example would be the voting equipment. We can leave it here until we need it, and then when we need it, we come get it. Even the safe, if the town manager came in once or twice a week to utilize that, she couldn't, so...
And you saw in the email, I did forward the email, we had to drain the pipes and all that stuff, close everything right out.
Yep. But that's a lot easier than hiring a carpenter, to take a bay at the public works, turn it into giant storage, and then try to, so, that's a big help.
Right.
It'll be a lot easier to move, 'cause you're just moving what you need.
What we need, yes.
Correct.
Is this building still gonna have power?
I don't know where we'll stand.
The only reason I'm asking is, if there's gonna be no fire suppression system, is that accurate? You just said, you mentioned drain and everything.
Yeah, it'll have to be drained.
Well, that's just something we like to know, so if we get a...
Yeah, well, you will know it. I mean, do you have an opinion as to whether it matters whether there's electricity in here or not?
I have an opinion whether that's if there's fire suppression system up in the building. Just because when this place goes with absolutely no help from anybody else, it's gonna be huge.
Yeah, it's not a matter of the, we're not, it's a total loss, we don't have the insurance, but it's still dangerous.
It's not a matter of this building, it's a matter of those houses leaving across the street. But I'm just, I was just curious, it's just something good to know of whether it does or not anymore.
Makes total sense. Does I, this is probably a dumb question, do you need electricity for the fire suppression to work?
I don't know if there's, I don't think there's a dialer on it anyway. The biggest thing is, I don't believe that that fire system down there is antifreeze, is it? I think part of it is, but I don't know for all of us.
That'd be a good question for Jerry, I don't really know that.
But I don't think there's a dialer on it.
What is that?
So that if it goes off, it automatically calls.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, you would...
Ah, no!
No, that part's not working.
No, I think there, oh, it used to be then, it used to be.
I don't remember, we looked at it, I don't remember if there's one down there or not.
Well, is that something that you could ascertain? If you went down and looked at it, would you know? No, okay.
Right, that's not a dialer.
No, I would not.
So, if it's not, if it's got antifreeze, if the whole thing is antifreeze, then it wouldn't freeze, and we wouldn't have to drain it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, it deploys antifreeze, and is that...
The first few feet.
Yeah.
Then you're getting into the, the feed, the water, just from the...
Oh, I see.
Right, depending on what type of system it is.
Right. So you get maybe ten gallons or whatever.
It's everywhere in the pipes.
Right.
Well, it could be charged with air, and then it has antifreeze from the system back through the wall for the water.
Okay.
If we can close, if you guys can close the whole building up and leave the fire suppression system somehow, that would be...
Yeah, I don't, we would if, I don't know why we wouldn't, other than if it requires electricity, and it doesn't sound like it does.
For what the system is, it ain't gonna do you much good, it ain't got much of a feed on it.
Well, any, any little bit would help to stop this place from moving, 'cause this is gonna be a...
It's gonna go.
This is one of my plans, along with the coffin house across the road, it's a, it's gonna be a big deal when it happens.
Hopefully it doesn't, but I don't, I guess we don't really know the answer to that right now.
We'll look into it.
And then, I had a question about heating, you know, if, if we kill the electricity, are we gonna heat it at all?
Well, that says, if you're gonna drain everything, there's no point.
Yeah, 'cause we were just getting ready, and I didn't pay it, we were just getting, we got billed for our service plan.
Right, you said that.
Yeah, so, to me, it doesn't make sense to pay.
No.
Not if you're not gonna run it.
Yeah.
I mean, if we were gonna keep it at a minimum temperature all winter, that would be something different, but... I don't know, I don't know the advantage, other, save the money, but I mean...
I don't manage to heat it.
Yeah, I don't either. I mean, the building has already been basically determined to be a total...
Well, I mean, you would heat a building to save the, help the foundation and things like that, and the foundation is a hundred percent gone, so...
That's what I mean, there's not a lot to protect here, other than, there is, when we're coming in for that occasional use, it could be five below zero in the office.
It could be a little cold, so...
Yeah, your hand might stick to the safe.
Just accordingly. Just accordingly. Don't leave anything liquid.
Well, I mean, some of those details we can work out, but you will know, whatever we know, with regard to fire spread. Anything else regarding that? We still haven't really nailed down a spot, Daley, you were not in here, but there's a, the insurance, Kimbels? He's got space in there too, he, he mentioned Alona, so she's gonna look at that before we commit to anything.
There?
I guess he's using like half of the building, or something?
Yeah.
So, it's another consideration.
Wow, that's a lot of space if he's only using half, a lot more than what you have in the other one.
And the whole basement, so, it won't hurt to just like...
Oh, huh, is it a finished basement?
I believe so.
Yeah, it used to be.
So we could meet?
I was down there years ago, and it wasn't in bad shape, I mean, it dropped.
It's not an old building.
So I'll look at it.
I suggested that if she thought it was a better fit, then don't be shy, let us know and...
Right, right.
So, okay. A new business, abatement of two-hundred-and-six dollars and ninety cents for map zero-zero-seven lot zero-three-zero-zero-six, doesn't own land leased.
So, I just wanted to explain it a little bit, we had done an abatement in the beginning for a Premium Joyce for six-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and six cents. This is the balance, they will lease in that property, so we needed to abate the land part of it as well, 'cause the owners were already paying the taxes on it.
Okay, so, should I make a motion to grant the abatement of two-hundred-and-six points ninety from map zero-zero-seven lot zero-three?
All in favor?
Zero-six.
We are all in favor. And this, by the way, was recommended by Josh Moore, our assesses agent. Fire department.
Okay, so, we have an issue with our tanker, and it's gonna be an expensive problem no matter which way we go. So, right now, we're looking at between ten to fifteen thousand dollars to get the undercarriage fixed, so that we can get it inspected and be legal for the road. The problem with that is, is if there's oil leaks and transmission leaks, and they gotta cut and weld under it, and they won't touch it, you know, that's all been fixed, so... Once we start diving into it, it could, it could go from ten to fifteen to twenty-five to thirty really fast.
Who did you get your quote through?
Harry J. Smith, I think, yeah, Harry J. Smith.
You reached out to anybody else?
We haven't yet, I wanted to talk to you guys before we even move forward. No matter who we go through, we know it's gonna be an expensive bill to get it fixed. The motor on that truck has three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand miles on it. It's an older truck, but it runs great and does fantastic for what we need it to do. So, these guys are joining me just so, to be a part of this conversation, 'cause we're all trying to figure it out together. We're not really coming and asking for anything, we're just coming to try to work out a solution, 'cause we run into different problems no matter which way we go. We can come in and ask me for a brand-new tanker, or even try to buy a used one, and so far, I haven't even been able to find one that'll fit in the station.
Isn't that, I thought that motor was redone when they got it.
Well, it probably was, twenty years ago.
Yeah, but we haven't put three-hundred thousand, that's what I'm saying, it's, since we got the truck, when that was a rebuilt motor and a rebuilt undercarriage, everything was redone on the truck when the town bought it.
Yeah, see, I wasn't even on when we bought it, you guys bought it before I even joined.
Yeah, they bought the truck and had it redone, and then it, I don't wanna think it was in Florida with it, somewhere down south at the body or whatever, they had it all put together.
So your frame's rusted, is that what it is?
They, there's different components under the undercarriage, and I don't know the terms for them, and of course, I left my damn notes at my office.
I would know the difference if you told me so. Like I said, it's not that, it's not corrosion, it's something...
Just parts needs to be replaced.
Shackles, I think, was one of them.
Bushings.
Bushings.
Bushings in and there, in or in, out there.
So just wear items?
It's just wear items, yeah.
This is weird that we've had, so do we have the same person looking at it every year? I mean, I, it's, I'm surprised that, that truck, for the amount of miles it gets put on a year, that all of this went to hell in one year.
Well, I think it's been going, and maybe he's been nursing it, but we use, what's his name, Anderson Beck?
Lad.
Lad, Lad Brothers, they've been doing it for, same guy's been doing it for years, he comes right to the station, he's been doing it for as long as I can remember. He slid underneath it this year and said, "I just can't do it, I can't put a sticker on it."
So that's out of commission right now?
Yep, he said, "Well, that's the direction it's heading," and yeah.
Oh, okay, but if you gotta call off tonight, you would use it, if you needed it.
Right now, I would.
Yes, okay. And he won't fix it because of...
He can't fix it, he doesn't have...
Oh, okay.
He just does inspections?
He just does inspections.
He's the inspector.
It needs to go somewhere with a heavy, heavy-duty lift.
Okay.
Harry J. Smith would do it, but they don't do the motor work, and they won't do it until all the leaks and all that are cleaned up, 'cause they're gonna cut and weld under it. It's gotta consist of pulling the tank off, and, which we just had the tank fixed, oh, seven, eight months ago, it was all under warranty.
Do the shackles and everything, and pull the tank?
He, the guy, the guy I talked to on the phone said he would have to pull the tank to fix it.
Do you got a list of what's wrong with it, or what needs to be done?
I do have a list, yeah, I don't have it with me, I can get it through you though. It's, it stinks to put twenty, thirty thousand dollars into that truck and have it last six months and something else happens. It'd be fantastic to put twenty, thirty thousand dollars into the truck and have it last another ten years, which is a realistic, we, you know, we don't put, maybe... If we put five hundred miles on it in a year, I'd be surprised, I don't even know what we put on in a year.
I don't know what we put on in a year, but...
Do you guys keep track in your maintenance, your mileage?
Oh, yeah, we write it down.
So I mean, you could, you could...
We could look back.
You could go back and see that since we've had it, how many, that'd be kind of an interesting thing to know.
Yeah.
But we, but we get a lot of hours on it.
But the, the engine portion, the, the oil leaks and hydraulic, no one's looked at that yet, you don't know what that is.
They haven't really dove into it, no. And that's not, you know, everybody we talked to says, "Yeah, it's a, well, I think it's a Detroit motor, whatever, it's on three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, they all, every single one of them leak like that."
Yeah, that's what they do.
That's what they do.
Forever?
And, and...
They do, they leak forever.
Yeah.
And these ones have a, a pan underneath them, they stay around the same spot, and those have been there for as long as I can remember to catch the oil and, and bring them back. So I mean, we can, we can bring it around to a few places and, but before we even move forward with it, I wanna know what you guys' opinion was and how you...
I think we need more information.
Yeah, I mean, there's, my thought is, and I'm not trying to steer it anywhere, but there's a lot of big truck garages around here, local, that do some of this stuff.
Yeah, Zach, Harretts can't, but we can probably take it to Bangor.
Diego in Holton, when I was there on the job, I talked to a guy, and he said they could do all of, you know, the engine work and the undercarriage work.
We can take it down there and get a quote.
The other thing to consider too, is this is a manual transmission vehicle, and there's only five or six on the department that can drive it.
That's another topic.
It's a different topic.
No, it is, but it's something to consider in this.
So why did you say Harretts couldn't do it?
He told us he couldn't do it.
Really?
Yeah, Gerald...
He saw the list?
Gerald up and saw him, and he said he couldn't do it. I don't know why he can't do it.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a fire truck, but it's the same frame, rear end, motor draining that any other big truck on the road.
Other than attacking the pump, it's just, it's, yeah.
Yep. And I'm not sure how much Cleese is doing now, but they were doing some heavy equipment work on the side, had his own mechanic, I'm not sure if he still does now or not.
So you don't need a special certification to work on a fire truck, I mean, there's nothing special?
Only the pump and the suppression system.
Okay, but that's not what we're talking about?
No, this is no different than if you put a dump body on it and call the dump truck.
Okay.
Well, it would seem to me, if you can, you would take it to Bangor and let them give you a quote, that seems like the next logical step.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, once we've done that, we'll know what we're actually, 'cause they do it all.
If they, yeah, well, Diego in Holton was the, the next place we were gonna go to.
Okay.
Were they in Magmore?
Yeah, right by Dice Arts.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, you have to bring the truck there so they can put it on a lift?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so somebody can't come here?
No.
Okay.
They'd never be able to get the whole, the whole yesterday.
Okay, so...
It's fine taking it out of service for a few days and having them look at it and get us, at least get us a quote.
Yeah, then we know what we're dealing with. Sounds good.
Roll in that direction?
Yeah, I don't know that we have any other logical direction to go.
No, there isn't, well, the direction before we went to fire was to see if it was worth even looking into, to another truck.
And these guys would be, I mean, if they put it on a lift and they stand to turn, they say, "It's garbage," then we got another conversation to have.
Yeah.
But it doesn't sound like it is, it sounds like it's been running reasonably well.
It runs great, the truck runs and goes great, it's, I love it.
Even on the fluid levels.
Sure, yeah.
I, I would hate to get rid of it, to be honest with you, I mean, I know, I understand, and that's a, that's a difference of opinion on the manual and the automatic, because if it was my way, every single truck over there would be a manual.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but...
Yeah, just to cover our...
Yeah, I mean, I just, it seems to me, if you're in the fire department, you're able to drive a standard shift.
Yeah.
Anyway, okay, that, that sounds...
All right, so that's the direction we're gonna head in, we'll keep you updated.
Sounds reasonable.
Keep us updated, that'd be great, thanks, Jen.
Did you wanna talk about this down here before we go, or...
The...
You had the calls listed out and everything?
No, we just put it on...
We put it on every...
Oh, it's on it, yeah.
Yeah, we keep it, we're gonna do this as a running tally.
All right, I mean, I think, I don't, I, I gotta get with you two anyway and see exactly where we're at with the budget, but I think it's been going pretty good.
Yeah, absolutely, we haven't, yeah, we're doing well right now.
Cutting, uh, cutting Sunday doo-ease from once a week to once a month has been huge, per cost savings, anyway.
Well, that's good, yeah, so this is good, 'cause it keeps us apprised of what's going on.
All right, that's, that's all good then.
You're all set with me, I'm gonna...
Yes, we are, thank you for coming down here.
I thought it sounded, sorry, forestry truck, I noticed that's still sitting in the garage.
Yeah, it doesn't have any insurance on it, it is, it is not in service.
All right, so you're gonna call and have them come get it?
Have, uh, I talked to the town, well, a forest ranger, and he was, he said, "I did set it up as soon as we called, I just haven't set it up."
All right.
I want to make sure we get all of our stuff off it, anything that's ours, and I don't know what's ours and what's theirs as far as the tank and the pump and...
The only thing I, this is probably where you're headed, with, with what's going on with this building, things are very likely to change up there, and we might, you might not have anywhere near the space that you guys are using up there right now.
You may not have any.
Yeah, or, yeah, half that building could be gone by this time next year, we've got a lot of stuff we gotta figure out, 'cause we gotta have a place to run the down, so...
It's gonna be a heck of a building to run the down on it.
Well, we, we need a spot.
Well, if you're, if you're gonna go brand-new, then, then we should all sit down and talk together, because that would be a perfect opportunity to bring FEMA into it and have a brand-new town office and fire station built up there.
That's, those are, those are discussions that are coming.
And we'd have room for everything.
So you think there's federal money?
Oh, there's definitely federal money, there is.
It might take a couple of years to get, that's the...
Well, if we can nail down a spot that works in the interim, that might be...
I mean, as far as the spot's concerned, that would be the perfect spot as far as we're concerned.
Yeah.
If you could somehow tie that all in together, that would be just a...
Well, there's, there's other things to talk about that are coming too, that, for this area, that might be better uses for that spot, so, that's the other.
Yeah, I mean, I just know, I'm, I'm just talking from the selfish boy inside, but I want a brand-new fire station.
If you keep going up that road, we'll be in Guilford pretty quick. You're just getting us closer, that's...
Well, you can imagine having to work in this office, so, I'm, I'm sure Alona's anxious for a new office, though. Without the mice and the spiders.
Yes, a window that opens.
Lucheries. Okay, well, well, those are all things that are coming, so, if that truck could be taken back to Forest Street, it's probably good, so... Town manager report.
We'll touch this tomorrow.
Okay.
Town manager's report, so, where we have to move out of this building by the end of September, I checked with David Ray, the pastor up to Grace Bible, and they're, we are able to use their community room for elections on November eighth. So all our elections will be up there, forty, there you go.
Okay, and do you have to notify the state on that?
I have to notify the state, I sent them out an email this morning, and then I'll have to update CBR.
Another thing you're gonna want up there, because I think if we ever, when we get rid of a new building, this, we would move, I love the way this folds up, and, but you're gonna need...
Cubicles.
Some sort of portable little cubicles with curtains, and I, that's the kind of thing that you might find is hard to get.
Yeah, and it's too bad, 'cause just a few months ago, there was a town giving them away, and they're all gone, but yes, I'll have to look into that.
But, yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate to get them ordered, 'cause we're gonna need something. I mean, we've got some enterprising people here, they probably could build something out of PVC or...
I was just thinking the same thing, we could probably build something for less than what I could buy it for.
It's just important that we have it, so... I mean, that room is so big up there, you probably could give people the privacy they want without even curtains.
Right, yeah.
You know, station, 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 I don't, I, you know, some ropes, I don't know.
Realistically, I mean, if you put everybody, if you put like a desk, a station, twelve feet apart, do you need curtains?
That's what I'm saying, it's so big there that you could give people the separation that they...
There is a little cardboard that you can sit on, that we can, that I can get.
Yeah, it's like those display things.
Yeah, that might, that, it's, that's huge room, so...
Couple tables.
Way more than we'll ever gonna get.
Yeah, well, what do we have, four stations here, five stations, I mean, so if you set up for four, people could be ten yards apart.
Yeah, and all four corners.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And do we have to publish that in the paper, I mean, is that something we're going to do?
Yes, well, I, yeah, we'll do, well, we're gonna have to publish a lot in the paper, where our new location's gonna be for a while, where the election will be, all that, so...
Yeah, the election, you can go ahead and start sharing, we don't have a town office location yet, but we are going to soon, so...
I mean, I wouldn't waste a lot of money in the paper, I wouldn't, I'd put it on the website.
We've got a website and things like that.
Put it, the door, the town, and Robinson's Post Office, I mean, a lot, most people don't get papers anymore.
Right, but that public notice, like, in the hometown advantage, is that, are those free, is that free? It's not.
No.
I, I thought that was free.
No, and I get my mail at the post office, and I can, without even turning, putting my key in, I can tell you every day that that free paper comes out, because the trash bin is overflowing and they're piled all over the place. Most of the people don't even take them, don't even leave the building.
Right, okay.
So, that's, I mean, I'm sure there's some that do, but for the cost of advertising, for the amount of people you're hitting, I think it's...
I'd put it on the website, and I'd, I'd might email all your people that, you know, know everybody, you know? Just to let everybody, anybody who's...
And Facebook, our Facebook, we can put it on Facebook, our website.
And a big notice.
On whatever door, wherever we are, you know, the elections will be held at...
Yeah, in fact, that could go on this front door, we've got another few weeks here, so... So, and along that same lines, this community room, I know we've let outside groups use this for meetings, that Bridie's actually had, I don't remember...
A shower or something?
Yeah, it was a private, which was fine, but we're not gonna, anybody who thinks that they're gonna be able to meet at, at the town facility, they're not gonna be able to anymore.
The town no longer has a community room.
Correct, so anybody you can think of that might be impacted by that, definitely reach out to them if you can do that.
I would definitely let them know. Um, now, about the, the planning board though, that would be a different story.
Planning board's just like us. Same function, that is up to us for the, for that purpose.
Okay, so they can meet, and we will meet.
And, and we have to have at least some semblance of public...
Space.
Space, 'cause people gotta be able to attend, or they have a right to attend, now, it might mean that they're standing up, but they still have a right to come. But, and we don't really even know the space that we're talking about yet, so, that, if, if this alternative space has plenty of room downstairs, who knows, maybe that'll become a meeting room, I don't know.
Yeah, so I'll check, I'll check tomorrow.
We might just have a smaller table and regular chairs for a while.
Yeah, yeah, like, yeah.
I mean, we had like a fold-up chair, you could throw it in the corner, and stack our chairs up, so they didn't take up much room, we have to unfold them when you needed it.
Take this fold-up table, right?
Yep.
Okay, those are, they're all coming together. Anything else on the report? Town manager report?
No.
Okay, moving on to road commissioners.
Oh, yeah, no, yes, matter of fact, I just reviewed the long, for the audit, found a few things, they're gonna adjust it, fix it, and then I'll give you, you guys will see the final copy, probably within a couple of days.
Okay. Road commissioners report.
I am proud to announce that C W N will be starting work tomorrow on several of those, so he'll, he's gonna be, he's gonna get the signs up to Public Works, and there'll be, he's gonna be starting some ditching and, and hauling stuff to get ready for the work that's gonna happen. And I would have been touched, in touch with the gentleman about the, the color books, so, I'm working on that right now, getting this sorted.
Anything else on roads? Selectment's concerns?
Too many, I had right now.
Uh-oh.
Well, it's been a busy week. So I had, since we mowed the, I don't know if Jody, if you knew, or had a chance, but I, we got the boat landing road is now mowed all the way down through, cut everything back to the stone wall. We did clear out around the center, I actually got, Kim Perkins sent me pictures one day, there was four, three trails, I think, parked from the boat landing road to the stone wall, right up that whole edge, so it did work.
It did work.
So anyway, since then, the people that are on the other road, they're starting to get ready to work on their road this year, so they stopped, come over to my house the other day, and reminded me that, how so many people use the Center Pond Road instead of the boat landing road, that they would like to know if we would donate a couple loads of gravel to help. And so as we're talking, here comes one truck out of our road, and then, before they got that out of the mouth, here comes the other one, and I let them know that, you know, I was very confident to say no, that the town can't and wouldn't donate any material or funds for non-town-owned property. So, what I did with her, I told them, it's like, you know, I said, "I've lived here a long time," I said, "Turn around and look at these two roads." I said, "And don't look at them as you're a camp owner wanting this road better." I said, "But when you look at this road, we have our stop sign, and then the boat landing sign, then they have a camp, so that's here, then you have the road, then you have the center, it has their camp signs, then they have a stop sign, and then you go to the other side of their road, there's another sign, and then another set of camp owner signs." I said, "That whole area is so congested, and it's so confusing," I said, "How do you expect anybody to understand what road you're supposed to use?"
Right, well, that's why.
So, I went over and I told her, I was like, "Look, this is Dale, as, I live across the street, not Dale as a select resident, but if I was you guys," I said, "And I will use my tractor and I'll help you do it, but on the further side away from the towns road, that's where we ought to dig new holes and move all your camp owner signs over there, so that, that kind of defines your area from our area." I said, "I think that would help," I said, "The other thing is, is our post with our boat landing sign desperately does need to be replaced, the blue on the boat landing thing is so faded out, I mean, usually a boat landing, you know what I mean, it's bright and..." So, I mean, our post definitely should be replaced, I think if our boat landing signs was above a post high enough, so that was on the top, then our stop sign was underneath it, so then people would, oh, that's, that, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That would help them out a little bit, but, so they're gonna work on their side, if we could see about signs or whatever, it's the same deal, if we get them, I'll help put them in, so it isn't, we'll have to need a new post or whatever.
We have plenty of posts.
Okay, but I'll help do that, what you're there.
So just clean it up and make it a little bit more clear what road is what.
Yeah, and I've actually, I mean, I brushed the whole thing, but I've been keeping that mowed. Not every week like you do your lawn, but I've been routinely mowing it at least to the hill, so as you drive by, it's more presentable. It makes it look better, or looks more like a road, so.
Right, and you feel like you can drive down there with your.
Correct.
And trailer and everything else.
Um, with that said, our road could use a little bit of gravel. I think it, there's a dip that could, that's kind of a washed out thing. That's kinda not that great on trailers, but if we did something there and I think down on the other end, that may need some work, but. I mean, I'd mark some trees for lorn or, because that's the other thing, even, there was another camp owner, um, before we got our boat. He had to back in from my house in, and then when I got my boat, I had to back all the way in.
How far is it, Dale?
Point two miles.
Point two miles.
Which isn't bad, till you reverse from the trail behind you. So it's a little bit when you gotta back your boat in, point two miles.
It's good practice.
But the problem is, is that the tru, the loop is, it's not that the loop is too small, but the trees are now grown so big.
Oh.
That you, there's just not enough room to get your truck and your trailer around that loop.
So the, do we need to remove some trees?
Yeah, there's a couple that I marked that are, and there's a couple that are dead that really need to come down anyway, so. But that really ought to be done. Um, I suggested to them, well, I didn't suggest, I reminded them that. A while ago, I don't remember how long ago, it was quite a while ago, we actually approached, had the town manager approach Mr. Brown about his camp road. And about doing something and have that be the pond, so I'm not sure. I know they were gonna talk to Bob about it again, but.
So there are three?
There's two roads. There's our road and there's the Center Pond Road.
Right.
Bob owns the Center Pond.
Oh, 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 and they all have a right of way over his land?
Everybody, everybody on the pond does. So I'm on the other side and I have a right of way down this road. So, if you read Bob's D, Bob's D, the way it sounds to me, that is the original road to the pond. So Bob actually, if you drive down that road, there's twenty, Bob owns twenty-five feet if you go straight. To the water that's adjacent to our boat land.
Oh, I see.
So, they never used it. It's all since it's overgrown and everything else, but that was the original intent.
So those camp owners, when they wanna deploy their boats in the water, launch their boats, would, do they go down the boat landing road or do they do go down the camp road? Can you get to the boat landing from either?
Yeah.
I gotta get down there.
Yes, you should, yes.
You drive down and you kinda cut over.
Okay.
You can't drive down the pond road all the way to get to the boat land. You drive halfway, you actually, halfway you drive over to the other road. Because there's a cutaway in the stone wall, that's where Marvin Edgley's house is.
Oh.
So he, the cutaway was intended for him, um, but it was also, I think, semi-intended, because that's how. The camp owners on that side of the pond get up and in and out as well, so. It's kinda.
Yeah, I think you're right. A signage is key, then people know.
Yep, and it's the same thing. I found one of the signs down at the water, that was coast lane in the ditch. Um, didn't even know that was there anymore. And I did get the milfoil one, that's cleaned up better, so you can see that, but. The only other complaint from everybody down that way is that is now turning more into a public swimming hole rather than a boat landing. Which is illegal, so I'm not sure if, there's no signage that says it, but I mean, that's, that's just state law, carry it. There's no boat landing in your lives when that, but.
So should we get a sign?
Well, that's, I don't know. Do they normally sign them or not? I've never, don't know if I've ever seen.
I don't see one, I've never seen one that, uh, either a DEXUS launches. That, that doesn't mean they aren't there, I've never maybe noticed them, but.
I mean, to me, it's a, it's kinda like every other lot the state has. It should be, um, I don't know if it's just a leasing issue. That they need to enforce it or what, but.
Greenville, they have an area that's public beachy right next to it, so that's where everybody swims anyway, so you don't have the conflict. But there really is no public access on Center Pond to swim.
Nope.
I mean, you can take your canoe out and go swimming.
Yep. But there's no public beach per se.
No.
All there is is that one dock.
And I don't know, you know, technically, if you've got a, you got a noodle. And you get to the boat launch and you just start walking out, I mean, that, when do you start swimming?
Don't die.
You're not supposed to fish where they're launching and unlaunching, but once you're at the water's edge, you can go wherever you wanna go.
Yep, but you're not supposed to be all sprawled out with your beach chairs.
No.
Coolers and.
Well, unless you have a party barge, and then you get to do it anywhere you want.
That's right. So that's kinda the issue, is the dock is turned into the.
Wow.
Public beach and that's how it rolls rolling out.
Well, you got one camp, you should go down there because there's, there's a camp owner that literally is right on the ramp. And I'm sure if you were there for an evening, enjoying the loons, and all of a sudden, eight people decide they're gonna have a party on that dock.
Oh, jeez.
It would be very annoying.
The funny thing is though, is I have yet to hear a complaint from that person. It's actually coming from the other direction. And as much as three and four camps down, they're hearing it, so, um, but it is, it's interesting. So anyway, that was that. The other thing, um, I met with Lance out on my lot to go over my permits after I talked to the contractor. We were talking about some other different things, um, the way we're gonna do, for what my permit was approved for. The contractor had a couple of different ideas that would make it better, less erosion, so I talked to Lance about that. Lance agreed. So then I talked to Lance again about, uh, afterwards, we don't really. I haven't, didn't like it when I was using our documents as far as the permitting. I think they're kinda clunky. Lance agreed that those should be changed and he said that, uh, there's actually a FEMA class that he's in. And they're saying if you're not using the state's provided ones, you're kinda in the wrong anyway, so he's gonna get with Jerry about that. Um, the other thing is, is like, um, I talked to him about, so like my changing of what I wanna do, he okayed it. But there was no documentation for me or for him at this time for that, so he's gonna work on something for that. I had an issue this spring, and I know he's been on my road a bunch of times this year already, about trees that have had, have to come down. Um, he's okaying them, he's working with people, not all of them are being okayed, obviously, but it's the same thing. It's a, it's an okay. Because he doesn't have anything for a form, so he's gonna be working on that as well.
So more of a paper trail.
Yeah.
To cover.
To cover everybody.
Right, right.
So, so I thought that was good. Um, the other thing he brought up, he said he'd mentioned it to you, but he wanted us to all talk about it. Is, uh, him and mileage.
Lauren and I touched on it, cause I saw some mileage bills up here.
Lance.
Lance getting mileage.
That makes sense, right?
We don't have a policy yet, and I don't know if we need one, but I agree it makes sense.
Yes, and I do too, so.
I mean, it, you shouldn't, shouldn't cost you money to be.
No.
Um, going for, I mean, stipend aside, you're still.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't know what we need to do to get that done, but I think that's a reasonable request. If we can just do it.
I, you know, we do it with, um, animal control, so I don't know why we just can't.
Okay, I mean, uh, all three of us feel like it's.
I think it's a big thing.
Total sense.
Yeah.
I'm kinda surprised we haven't been doing it, to be honest with you.
I kinda like the idea of it, because, you know, when you see it, you know, if he does two hundred miles this month, you know, well, geez, we were doing an awful lot this month.
Right.
If you did ten, alright, then it's like, why aren't you up there so much? And it cuts, but I think it'd be a good way to kinda show us what's going on too, easily.
I look, I just like the road commissioner, you know, if you got a big windstorm and the next time we meet, you've got a gas bill because she had to go check, that makes total sense to me.
Right.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So, yeah, I think, I, just do it.
Yeah, we have a bucket for it anyway, so.
I think we're okay to do it. The only thing I didn't know about, do we actually just wanna add the paragraph in our personnel policy? For elected and appointed, because to me, it's no different for us if you're gonna go to a class in Augusta. You know what I mean? That's.
I like that. I think that's a, just to get it, why not? Why not add a paragraph referencing elected and appointed?
I mean, for me, I don't think.
It's official.
I don't think I should put in mileage, cause I go check roads or I do anything.
Right, right.
Within the town, but if we, one of us has gotta go out of the town to do.
A training.
A training, I don't see why we should be any different than anybody else.
Yeah.
I agree.
So we'll just change it. We'll just add it.
We'll add a.
Add something for.
Yeah, elected, appointed, just so that the town manager has, there, this is why I paid him, because it's right here.
Because it's right in our policy. Yep, that's good.
Do you have more?
Nope, I'm done.
Before we leave, I, if, if this fire truck thing ends up being somewhere between fifteen and thirty thousand. Uh, they don't have any budget to do that this year.
Nope.
So, they would either go until next year or you'd have to have a special. So I just, that's kinda, I just, occurred to me. So, I mean, if the bill came back at ten, we might, we, we could say that, you know, that, that was an designated.
And just go ahead, but, and more than that.
I'm just, I'm just kinda shocked. If, if the number is truly, if we put five hundred miles a year on vehicle. There's no way in my brain that I think we should be coming up with a ten thousand dollar bill for worn out parts underneath it. That means somewhere along the line, somebody's dropped the ball. I'm just.
Yeah, you just wanna.
Well, it doesn't sound like it's ten either. It sounds like ten would be your gift.
No, I know, but I mean.
Looks like he's prepping us for thirty.
Right, that last year, everything passed.
Yeah.
Without even a comment, like, eh, next year, we're gonna need to talk about this, or.
Correct.
This last year.
We're really speculating until.
Hundred percent.
They do stem to stern in Bangor, I think those guys will know what you got, cause they can do both the motor and.
That's great.
So.
Well, the only thing that we do know is that it's tanker, so it only runs on fires, and that when we look at our chart.
There were no fires.
We've only paid out, you know, that's total man hours, so we've only had roughly, what, four calls?
Wait, where are you coming up with that?
Structure fire miscellaneous.
Okay, yep.
You know, I mean, if you paid out a hundred and forty-eight total hours for mutual, for everybody, that's not that many actual fire calls that they would've gone on.
Right.
So, I mean, that truck hasn't been used a whole lot last year.[1770.84]